Welcome to the, uh, meeting of the Town of Hingham Select Board, July 30th, 2024. It is 7:00 PM.
Recording in progress.
This meeting is being held in person and remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is anyone else recording? Seeing none, I note for the record that participating in the meeting this evening are Liz Klein, Bill Ramsey remotely, and myself, Joe Fisher. First item on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. If you're willing and able, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next on our agenda is approval of minutes. Liz and Bill, are you ready?
Ready.
Okay, I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes dated July 8th, 2024.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And I may as well. Next motion.
I make a motion to approve the minutes dated July 11th, 2024.
I'm going to abstain because I was not here.
I will second that. Roll call vote. Bill.
Aye.
Myself, aye, and Liz, you are abstaining.
Abstain.
I'm prepared to take another motion.
Do you mind making a motion?
I make a motion. Oh, do you want to do it, Liz?
No, can you make it, please?
Sure. I make a motion to approve the minutes dated July 16th, 2024.
And I will second that. Roll call vote. Bill.
Aye.
Liz, you're abstaining?
Abstain.
And I am an aye as well. They are approved. Next item on the agenda is really one of the most controversial items that we're going to have this evening. It's to proclaim August 10th, 2024, as Farmer's Market Day in the Town of Hingham. And Mark Cullings, I believe you are here. You can address the controversy surrounding this?
Boy, it is one controversy. Never can't figure out why it ends on the day that we would like to be, uh, denoted Hingham Farmer's Market Day rather than at the beginning of the week. But such a, it's, uh, anyway, it's, uh, all, it's terrific. This, uh, and the Hingham, or the, uh, the nation celebrates farmer's markets in the first week in August annually. And, uh, so we have, uh, very pleased to, uh, be doing the same in the name of Hingham, Massachusetts. And we're very proud of our little market and very proud of Hingham's participation in it, which has, uh, just resonated with all of our vendors and our customers and drive, we feel draws, uh, many people, both citizens of Hingham and the region and elsewhere, um, to the town for, uh, when the weather is good. And yet we have had some sporting days, but the weather this year has been generally very fine and the participation has been, uh, great. Uh, and Joe, as you, um, have pointed out in the past, uh, this Hingham Farmer's Market operates every Saturday from the beginning of May until Thanksgiving, uh, at the Station Street parking lot, uh, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. Then we take a month off and then we'll reopen in Wampatuck for 12 sessions. Uh, and I always look forward to that, too. We're just getting into peak season with, uh, field tomatoes, not greenhouse tomatoes, uh, uh, field corn that is just in abundance. It's been a terrific growing season. The vendors are, uh, the vendors, uh, stalls are chock-a-block full. Uh, and we love watching the opening queue. Two weeks ago, we had almost 100 people waiting to get in and we always, um, are appreciative of the, the person who is there in the pole position. It's, uh, it's a great community event. We, we love it. It's the best part of my week.
So, um, Mark, uh, all of us really, um, not only appreciate, but want to recognize your work, uh, and the work of your group in making sure that the farmer's market is a success. Uh, it's, it's a success not only for those who are the vendors, but it's a success for the residents, not just of Hingham, but of surrounding communities, and it's a success for other businesses in the downtown as well. Uh, so thank you. My question to you is, you mentioned that you take a month off between the summer and the winter. Why do you take, why do you need that month off? There's such a demand for people going to Farmer's Market that I get called. Why, why aren't they open? So, um, maybe you can address that in the future, but we'll, we'll work on that. Would you work on that, please?
With your permission, may I just make, um, one more comment?
Yeah, and then I was actually going to ask you if there's anyone else you wanted to acknowledge and thank.
I do. Um, it's the, the, the friends of the farmer's market. Thank you for your, um, your kind words, Joe, but, um, this is very much a group effort, a team effort, and it would not happen without, um, a, a core of just very dedicated volunteers, the friends of the Hingham Farmer's Market. Um, and as I think you know, that maybe others don't, um, we do participate in the federal SNAP program, Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, and we are able, um, uh, not only to participate in that program, but to provide a little bit of a extra juice, if you will, to the benefits that, uh, SNAP participants get. Thanks to the generosity of Hingham Institutions for Savings and the Fruit Center Marketplace, we're able to supplement, um, SNAP participants', um, uh, participation in a modest amount, but it does, farmer's markets are not cheap. They don't operate at the kind of scale that, uh, um, commercial grocery stores operate. And, uh, most everyone appreciates that, but the, the benefit is that you're looking your farmer in the eye. And as, uh, one customer said, um, just recently, a head of lettuce that I, uh, that she had bought at the farmer's market, two weeks later was still, uh, in service. It took her a while to work through it, but she said, if I, if I went to a grocery store, it'd be, it'd be done in four or five, three or four days. Um, but the, the produce is coming directly from a, a local farm and, uh, and so you get the, the benefits of that. Now, the other thing is, we've started something, um, this year that we've long hoped to do, and that is, uh, we've begun a collaboration with the Hingham Food Pantry and Susan Kirnham and the Fruit Center Marketplace again. Um, the, uh, we, at the end of the market, um, some of the, the vendors have produce and baked goods that, um, are not going to be saleable after the market. Uh, and so we, um, we glean, that is, we, um, we pass around the market and, um, it's completely voluntary, but the responses from the vendors has been fabulous. Um, we collect the, uh, the, the items, the leftover produce, baked goods and other, other goods. Some of them are, um, uh, sauces and dried pasta and that kind of, uh, thing that the other producers just wish to, uh, get on someone's table. And, uh, then, uh, we take the, uh, the gleanings, if you will, the boxes over to the fruit center. They put them in cold storage and, um, the, uh, uh, the food pantry picks it up on Monday and, um, soon thereafter, it's on people's tables. So it's, uh, uh, we thank Susan Kirnham for her cooperation, um, uh, and the Fruit Center Marketplace for theirs. It's just been, it's been a terrific experience so far.
So it really has been a terrific experience for the town, and we thank you. I'll open up to, uh, Bill and Liz to see if they have any rebuttal comments, uh, on this. I'll start with Liz.
Thank you.
I'm ready.
Well, thank you, Mark, for all your work and your team and, and the friends of the market. Certainly, it is a wonderful thing for our community. Thrilled to hear that the, the partnership with SNAP and now the Hingham Food Pantry are happening. So thank you for your continued leadership on this.
Mr. Ramsey.
I would just echo what Joe and Liz already said about how wonderful the market is. I was walking by it on Saturday and it kind of popped in for a little bit and talked to myself how lucky we are to, to have it as a community. So thanks for all you do, Mark. It's, it's wonderful that we have a farmer's market.
Thank you, Bill. Um, so we have a lengthy proclamation, uh, that we will be signing and presenting to the farmer's market, and Mark will give it to you, but at this point, uh, I'd be prepared to accept the motion for the proclamation.
I'll make a motion to proclaim Saturday, August 10th, 2024, as Farmer's Market Day in the Town of Hingham.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Congratulations, Mark, and thank you for everyone who participates in the farmer's market.
Thank you, Mark.
Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Break Rock Brewing LLC for summer send-off at World's End on Saturday, August 24th, 2024, with a rain date of Sunday, August 25th, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. Is, uh, is Jay Soundward here?
This is Jay.
I'm sorry.
Can you hear me okay?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. There you are.
Great.
So if you could just, uh, give us an outline of what is, uh, on tap?
Sure. I like the, uh, I like the use of on tap. No pun intended.
Okay.
We allow puns. We're fans of puns. Um, I, I will admit, it's, I've never actually attended the event, but we have worked with both Hingham and the trustees in the past that Weir River Farm. From what I understand, the, the summer send-off, uh, at World's End is a, a community-focused event. There'll be live music. Break Rock will be there along with Stellwagen Brewery, a couple of food trucks. So, um, I would imagine that the atmosphere is very similar to the Sunset Picnic's or Spring or Fall Fest at Weir River where it's, you know, community and family-centric. Uh, from the Break Rock side of things, you know, we always have tip-certified servers there, uh, who practice safe service, and, um, we're looking forward to a great event.
Bill, any questions?
Yeah, so how many people are you anticipating again, Jay?
I'll be honest, I don't have that answer. I don't know if there's a trustee's rep on the phone that might have that, uh, but I think, uh, in the past, the, the Sunset Picnic's have been around like 200 or 300. Um, I would imagine it might be a little bit bigger than that, but, um, based on past applications, it's probably a similar number.
That sounds about right. Thank you for that. And Tom, what about the police department's input into this, um, this request? They, they requiring a detail or?
That's right. Yep, the chief signed off. He is requiring two police officers, um, per the, the scope, the, the parameters that we outlined in that, um, discussion with Dave last month.
Great, thank you. All right, thank you. Best of luck.
That those two police officers are for the entirety of the event, because the next one is also requiring two police officers, but it's the same event, just two different vendors, so.
Great, and you saved me asking the question for the next one. Appreciate it. All right. All right, Jay, best of luck on a good event. Wish you the best.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Liz.
Um, no, no real questions. I was going to ask about the number as well, um, but regardless, it looks like the chief has requested the two detail officers. But I know it's a great event. It's been successful in the past. Um, the application looks complete. I see that Alyssa is on. I don't know if she wanted to add anything.
Hi, everyone. Hi. Um, I'm the engagement manager for that property. Um, so yeah, it's just a, pretty much what Jay said, it's a family-friendly outdoor concert. We have food trucks and beer trucks. Uh, the number is a little higher. It's about 750, but I've been in touch with the police department and I'm getting those details scheduled. Um, we've never had a problem in the past. We have the ticketing all set up, so should be smooth sailing.
So I did have a question on the number because the application does show 500 to 750, um, as the anticipated attendance, but then we have a report showing that last year it was 1,000 to 1,200. I'm wondering why you would expect a smaller crowd this year?
I think we anticipated a larger crowd last year and didn't actually wind up with a larger crowd, so we're kind of managing our expectations differently this year. But either way, it's the same amount of cars that we let in. We have a maximum number of 250 cars. Whoever comes in those cars is, you know, kind of a coin toss, um, but it'll never be more than that at World's End.
Tom, anything else to add?
Nope, I'm good.
And did we have anyone from the, uh, please?
Sergeant Kilroy is online if you have questions for him.
Well, I don't know. Um, yes, Sergeant Kilroy, anything that you'd like to add to this?
Good evening, sir. No, uh, no, no issues on our end, sir.
Great, thank you. Any member of the public, comments or questions?
Thank you, sir.
Seeing none, I am prepared to take a motion.
I make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverage license to Break Rock Brewing LLC for summer send-off at World's End on Saturday, August 24th, 2024, with a rain date of Sunday, August 25th, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. It is approved, and we move on to the next event, which is actually the same event, uh, to consider the approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Stellwagen Beer Company LLC for summer send-off at World's End on Saturday, August 25th, I'm sorry, 24th, 2024, with a rain date of Sunday, August 25th, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And is Michael Snowdale on the line?
Hi, yeah, I'm here.
Yes.
Can you hear me all right?
We can hear you. Anything you would like to add to the prior presentation?
Uh, no, as the, uh, as Jay was saying, um, I'll echo all that. I love going second in these because I don't have a ton to add, but, uh, yeah, tip-certified fours for Stellwagen. Um, we roll up with our beer trailer. It's always a great event. We did the, um, summer send-off two years ago, I want to say. We didn't do it last year. But yeah, love, love doing it at World's End, and, um, we're excited for it this year.
Bill, any questions?
Nothing, uh, nothing in addition to what I've already asked. Thank you.
And Liz.
Yeah, no questions. I know Stellwagen has participated successfully in the past.
Yes, and we do appreciate your, your involvement and support of the town. Tom, anything?
Nope, I'm good.
Yeah, I think we've, we've covered this before. Any questions or comments from members of the public? Seeing none, I am prepared to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to Stellwagen Beer Company LLC for summer send-off at World's End on Saturday, August 24th, 2024, with a rain date of Sunday, August 25th, 2024, from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. We are approved. We move on now to a different date to consider approval of the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to the McCourt Foundation for the 15th Annual Tour de South Shore to be held at Wampatuck State Park on Saturday, September 21st, 2024, from 10:00 AM to 1:30 PM. And do we have Rosemary here from the McCourt Foundation?
Yes, hi, everybody.
Hi.
Thanks for fitting us in tonight. Um, so as you mentioned, this is, uh, the McCourt Foundation's 15th year doing the Tour de South Shore. So we are a nonprofit organization that raises money for neurological diseases. This is one of our big fundraisers of the year, consists of a 5K family-friendly run/ walk through Wampatuck, and then a 25 and/or 50-mile bike ride through the towns of Hingham, Cohasset, Norwell, and Situate. Um, after those three events finish, we have a finish festival at the Visitor Center in Wampatuck, uh, which includes clam chowder, Bertucci's is bringing their, um, pizza oven this year. Uh, we do have a beer partner, um, music and, and fun for the whole family.
Bill, any questions?
No, it's, I know it, this has been an annual event for the last couple of years, and, um, it, it's been very successful without any issues, so I wish you the best of luck this year as well.
Thank you.
Liz.
Agreed. This has been a really successful event. Thank you for continuing it. Um, I don't have any questions, just make a note that, um, Chief Jones has required a detail, police detail, um, but other than that, no questions or concerns.
Yeah, I've reviewed the application and the packet. It looks complete. Um, right, and the, the police chief notes that they will need a detail at the liquor service area. Tom, any additions to this?
Nothing additional.
Any comments from members of the public? Hearing none, I'm prepared to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the issuance of a special one-day wine and malt beverages license to the McCourt Foundation for the 15th Annual Tour de South Shore to be held at Wampatuck State Park on Saturday, September 21st, 2024, from 10:00 AM to 1:30 PM.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill.
Aye.
Liz.
Aye.
I am an aye as well, and you'll notice that each one of us tried to give a French spin because it was Tour de something, and we tried to make it sound French, but, um, I'm not sure how well we succeeded. But we wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Well done with the accent. Thank you.
Next item on our agenda is to, uh, make sure I'm doing the right one, to, it's an application for a transfer of restaurant common victualler all-alcoholic beverages license and pledge of license by Ironwood Trio Corp., 274 South Street, Hingham. And we have Tina Conte, the manager here, and please explain what you are seeking to accomplish.
Um, what you, uh...
Oh, yes, go ahead. Oh! I totally missed this. Okay. Right. I've been very involved in this, and now I'm asking like...
It's okay, yeah.
You know, you know her.
We're just, we're, we're taking over a five-year lease at the South Shore Country Club and are looking to continue to do business as usual, same hours, and to just to transfer the liquor license so we can continue to do what Elio's been doing for the last 15 years.
And, um, we know that you personally have been involved in this for a while.
Yes.
And, um, I've tasted the food, I think it's great.
Perfect.
But also, I know that you, you've had meetings with, um, the Country Club Management Group, uh, and I know they have a lot of faith in you, um, and I know that we are all looking forward to an ongoing, successful relationship.
As am I.
Yes. Bill, any questions?
I, no questions, Tina. Best of luck. Um, looking forward to, uh, to being there to support you and, uh, wishing you the, all the best moving forward.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Liz.
Yes, thrilled that you're there, um, at the Country Club and certainly look forward to our continued partnership. I just wanted to clarify the, the timing. Is this, is this the annual license or taking over? Do you know the timing? Tom, do you know when it, I just...
What I do know is we're taking over January 1st, so it'll be a transfer at that point.
Okay.
So, right, so the transfer is effective as of the new calendar year?
That's right.
January 1st of 2025. Right.
And it's an annual license?
It's an annual license.
Yes, yes.
So you would come back each year?
Yeah, okay.
Just to be clear.
All right.
Excellent. Yeah, no concerns.
So, so Tom, on the agenda, no, nowhere does it mention South Shore Country Club. I must say, it says 274 South Street. I know that that's South Shore Country Club. I, I just know South Shore Country Club, and I have been involved directly in this, uh, and I'm really looking forward to, uh, your ongoing work.
Thank you so much.
So thank you.
Much appreciated.
Um, any members of the public with comments or questions? Hearing none, I'm prepared to take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the application for a transfer of license submitted by Ironwood Trio Corp., 274 South Street, Hingham. Tina Conte, manager, filed with the Town of Hingham on May 6th, 2024, with the following operating hours, Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 1:00 AM, Sunday, 10:00 AM to 1:00 AM. This approval is subject to the submission of a valid certificate of insurance evidencing liquor liability insurance coverage and at least the minimum statutory amounts and the approval of the Massachusetts Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Good to see you.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina.
I cannot follow this agenda so rigorously. I need to, to look up every now and then.
This is Kevin Whalen, he's also from the Country Club.
You might recognize.
Okay, okay, I will make sure. So, next item on our agenda is to consider the agreement with Almar LLC for the roof replacement of the clubhouse and bowling alley at the South Shore Country Club. And I do see Kevin Whalen there. And I know Kathy is on the line as well. Okay, so if you can begin to explain why we needed a new roof and what is going to be going on.
The replacement of the roof was highlighted in the, um, there you go. The replacement of the roof was highlighted in the building assessment that was completed in, um, 2023. Placed that in our, uh, capital plan and also requested the funds in our FY24 budget at the, uh, annual town meeting of, uh, April of '23. We have encumbered the funds because obviously it's taken longer to get the plans and documents and project out to bid, and we are, um, ready to go at this point. We received two qualified bids. One was from Almar, which was 377,000, and another one was, uh, from Triumph, which was 459,500 dollars. So obviously, we're moving forward with the low bidder, which is Almar. The other thing, too, is that with this project, there is a substantial amount of carpentry work that will be completed on the clubhouse building, like the Queen Anne dormers will be redone, um, along with other flashing and other, um, you know, spatial boards and stuff like that will be replaced as well. So it's not just, you know, some roofing, it's also some carpentry work to replace some old wood as well. And it will all be done in compliance with the Historical Commission.
And what about the timing?
So the timing is, the contract is October 11th, and it runs through, I believe, November 30th, Kathy?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, to November 30th, and, uh, the reason for that is we're looking to, um, you know, probably do the clubhouse work after the, um, wedding season, which their last wedding is like the first week of November. And so it'll be both peaks, the bowling alley, the, um, the locker rooms, those things will both be done, and the, uh, clubhouse will be completed as well.
So, right, so the last, this all work completed by the end of November?
November, correct.
Bill, any questions?
Yeah, just real quick, Kevin, so you said you want to do it in a November timeframe?
Yeah, so we'll start like probably mid-October, working on the bowling alley, um, portion of it, and then move over by the end of November, completing the clubhouse, um, in function space area by the end of November.
I know you mentioned the Historical, uh, Historic District Commission. Do you have a, um, certificate yet, or are you applying to get on their, their, their agenda?
Um, I've already, I went to the, um, Historical Commission for a grant. They did provide a grant, uh, for me, and part of that grant was from the, um, Greenbush Trust, so it was to, um, do the windows on the front of the clubhouse and put shutters on there as well. And as part of this project, we included the dormers, which was part of that, um, financial request that I placed to the, um, Greenbush Trust. So I will follow up with the Historical Commission to make sure that we're ready to go, but I think they're, they're well aware that, you know, the work that we're doing.
Great. And, you know, new roofs usually last about 25 years. Uh, we, and we anticipated the same or longer?
So we went with a, a heavier 30-year shingle. I think one of the problems with, like, in '04, when they redid the roof, they went[1736.58] '04, when they redid the roof, they went with a lighter shingle. And as everyone knows, at 274 South Street, that the wind is high because the buildings are up on a hill. So we do get a, you know, substantial amount of like north, like prevailing winds from the north. And so I think we made sure that in the contract that we went with a heavier 30-year shingle to ensure that we would not be losing shingles after a few years.
All right, great. Good luck. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Liz?
I just wanted to confirm the funding source. So these are from the capital, the South Shore Country Club's capital fund?
Yes, so we have some retained revenues, and as part of the FY '24 budget, we were allocating some of the funds from the retained revenues and, you know, from the retained revenues to cover any shortage that we would have in our FY '24 budget. So that money, we encumbered that money to move forward into FY '25, and we'll be using those funds that were allocated from the FY '24 budget.
Okay, great. Excellent. Well, thank you, Kevin, for your continued leadership and stewardship of that property.
Appreciate it.
We are grateful.
Thank you.
So the Country Club is the Enterprise Fund?
That's correct.
And so you are, if you will, self-funding?
Correct.
And so what I'm hearing is going forward with this project will be done in a manner consistent with that and continue to be self-funding?
That's correct.
A related topic and something that I've discussed with Tom is to what extent will this roof be considered for solar panels and/or at least being ready to receive solar panels?
So I think the exterior of the roof would be, would be available to put solar on it. I think you would still have to do some additional structural analysis to ensure that the roof could withstand putting, you know, the additional weight of solar panels on there and the infrastructure of that. I did talk to our engineer that, or our architect that did it. He said it would have to be, you know, definitely have to look at some additional models to make sure that it would be able to withstand the weight of, if you did a solar project. One of the things, too, is that, you know, the building was built in like 1950-ish, you know, so it is an older building, and it's, I don't know, I've been up there. It looks like a fairly unique way that they did the framing, but I'm not an engineer or an architect, but, you know, I haven't really seen anything like it before. But I think we'd have to just do additional analysis to ensure that it could withstand the weight of the solar project and also make sure, ensure that it would be beneficial as far as the, you know, the orientation of the roof is a little different than like, say, the maintenance building, which we made sure that we oriented it to maximize solar. This is not, probably would not maximize solar based on the orientation of the roof, where it's facing, the peaks are facing east and west.
So, Tom, you and I talked about this, and HMLP has been doing an analysis of town buildings. So to what extent can we make sure that this is coordinated with the HMLP review of solar panel projects that would be most beneficial to the town?
Sure. So I spoke with Tom Moran today. His recollection, well, first of all, we wanted to meet with Brianna this week to actually run that model against this building, but she's been out sick, so we haven't had a chance to talk to her. But I thought, I heard that the early, or Laura had run that model herself and found that that building wasn't optimally oriented.
Was not?
Right.
Right.
So, you know, one of the questions we have to ask, not just the economic impacts and/or timing impacts of making sure the roof is structurally sound to hold the weight of the panel, but also are the panels going to be able to pay themselves back over a reasonable amount of time? We haven't collectively determined what reasonable is in that world. Some of them are, you know, the industry's optimal is like six or seven years. I think, you know, we've been told that this one might be as many as 15. So we have to make a decision. Is that money we want to spend? Is that appropriate, isn't it? We haven't figured that out yet either. But Art is going to spearhead this for us, and we'll talk with Brianna and HMLP going forward.
And is there anything we need to do with respect to this contract to make sure that we are consistent with moving forward, if it's appropriate with a solar panel, making the solar ready?
Yeah, this contract does not contemplate the structural integrity of the roof being made sufficient to hold the capacity of a solar panels. So if we're going to do that, we may have to scrap this contract and do a new contract and add that into the, into the scope to make sure that the roof is designed in such a way to hold the weight of the solar panels, if that's what you guys want to do.
Well, I guess the question is, are we prepared to move forward with this contract this evening, or do we need further analysis? I don't want to move forward with the contract and it turns out, well, not the right one because we want to proceed in a different manner.
Kathy can answer the question better than I can, but I think that we probably can't change this contract now because it was bid with a certain scope. So if we're going to
change the contract, we'll have to change the scope and rebid.
No, you can't. It wasn't part of the specifications. It's too big to change.
Right.
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 So I was hoping that we would be further along in the discussion with HMLP so we'd know whether or not it's worth holding off on this or not. What I'm hearing is the assessment is, is this may not be a prime?
I don't think this is, personally, I don't think this is the right roof. I think we need to, Liz and I were talking about trying to make sure that our procurement's going forward when we do roofs, make sure that they contemplate making them solar-ready in the, at the bid stage.
Right.
But I don't know that this roof was optimal anyway. I don't, I wouldn't recommend it on this roof. There's, in the solar, in the Country Club complex alone, there's five different roofs between the restaurant and events roof, then you got the down, the lower restaurant, you got the bowling alley, the area next to that, the pro shots, and then the pool.
Yeah, the bowling alley has its own peak, and then there's a valley in between, and then there's another peak that goes over the locker room.
Right.
So it's like there's, you know, really, you know, it's, and it's.
They're all east-west facing.
Yeah, they're all east-west facing. There's no getting around that, so.
Anyway, that's just, but if we, if we want to evaluate that and ask HMLP to evaluate that, we can do that.
Let me ask you about the time sensitivity of this contract. If we, we'll have another meeting in two weeks, is it, will it hold things up for you adversely if we wait until that meeting to?
I don't know that, no, I think the answer would be no. But I don't know as far as, do we have 30 days, Kathy, to sign the contract? Is that, do we have time to wait two weeks?
Oh, yeah, we should.
Okay.
Especially because it doesn't start till October.
Right. I saw the commencement date, and I thought we would have the room. I had hoped that we have, we'd have a more definitive answer with respect to HMLP's assessment of where we are with the roof.
We'll be able to get that from Brianna. Presumably, she'll be well next week, so we'll talk to her next week.
Okay. And is it Art who's going to spearhead this? Just, okay, so Art will look for you to give us a recommendation so that we can come in. Hopefully, we don't need to have this re-presented. If the answer is this is not an appropriate roof, we're just going to vote, presumably to approve it. If it turns out it is an appropriate roof and it's higher on the priority list, then we may need to have a further assessment of this contract.
Perfect.
Bill, are you, you okay with deferring for two weeks?
Yeah, 100%. You know, I, I know we haven't codified anything, but we've been telling HMLP, some folks from HNZ, that any new roofs going forward would have solar capability. So I'm not sure how this, we didn't get, we didn't have that discussion on this roof. So, yeah, I'm glad we're going to delay it because I would have abstained.
All right, I'm going to, I'm going to just check the document to make sure we're not going to run out of days. I doubt the vendor's going to give up on us if we went past anything, but I'll, I'm just looking through it really quickly.
Yes, I mean, you should know that you're not hearing anything negative about this contract or moving forward, other than making sure that we're not tripping over the solar readiness issue.
Action on the award will be taken within 30 business days after the opening of the bids, and the bids opened on, sorry, June 26th. So we probably don't have too much time, according to the contract and the bid terms. But again, we can probably.
So we're already past that date now?
But you can agree.
We can talk to the vendor about agreeing to, you know, hold their pricing.
Yes, and I'll check with Bill and Liz, but if we need to move something sooner, this board is, will be prepared to move as soon as possible to make sure we can get this done.
Okay.
Kevin, you, anything else on this?
Nope, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Fine with that course of action.
And if you hear that there's a timing issue that you hadn't thought of, please let Tom know or Art know, and we will move in an expedited manner.
Keep everyone informed.
Yeah, thank you. Great.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on our agenda is to consider the agreement with Oakers Company for audiovisual upgrades to the Town Hall Central Meeting Room. Now, who's going to be presenting on this? Is it Michelle Balcony or?
I believe so, yep.
Where are you?
No, Bill Hardigan's there, too.
Oh, good.
Hi, you have a few of us, so hopefully we can all answer your questions.
We may have enough for a basketball team? I'm not sure. How many do we have?
I'm the, I'm the sixth man on that. I'm not the first five.
Okay, well, we can, we can sub in people. So please, give us a presentation as to what this is about.
I can start with this. You know, this is the product of multiple RFPs over a lengthy period of time, working with Kathy, multiple back and forth with Oakers and other vendors, and the others kind of dropped out, and Oakers was the only one that kept coming to the facility and looking it over. But working with Michelle and her team, and particularly Ryan, Ryan and I spent untold hours with Danielle from Oakers to review the space and try to get us back to a broadcast-ready environment in there with the interim speakers working, in-room microphones, not that, you know, portable set that they've been using down there in the space, which is very clumsy and cumbersome for meetings down there. So multiple conversations. Ryan can probably explain some of the details. If you have any questions or details on the line items on the, on the bid, because that's much more his, his area than mine. But a lot of work went into this, and I think we've got a product that will get us broadcast-ready with options in the future to add in, if we wanted to add a second projector in the south side where there isn't one now and things. So we're not precluding any future enhancements to the space as well with what we've got designed here.
Could you speak a little bit about, there is the comment here in terms of the contract is valid through March 31st of 2025, but expected much sooner. If you could just let us know what the realistic expectation is in terms of getting this done?
Well, I think, you know, if we could sign the contract tonight, I think Ryan and I, we would reach out to Danielle and see if she'd come in tomorrow, is the, is the, is the goal. Ideally, we'd get it done over the course of the summer before meeting schedules get busier in the fall.
Yeah, they, they had just asked for a little bit of an extra time on the end, just in case there were back orders and things like that. But obviously, they're going to do it as soon as they can.
Yeah, but I think you just hit the nail on the head. In terms of getting it done, well, there is the summer hiatus and not, often there are fewer meetings during the summer than once the fall kicks in. So I think the sooner the better. Liz, any questions?
So this contract covers the equipment as well as the installation?
Correct.
Okay, great. And the, it's being funded by the cable funds?
Correct.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for working so hard. I know this took a lot of time and energy, and it's certainly something we need, so appreciate your efforts.
Bill?
I, no additional questions. Thanks for all your efforts. Appreciate it.
Yes, no, I think this is, the sum looks reasonable. The work is necessary, and so I have no additional questions. Tom, anything you wanted to add on this?
Nope, other than just acknowledging Michelle Montegir was a key role, a key player in this whole effort as they were designing this. She worked closely with Michelle and Ryan and the team and built, so.
Great.
Any questions or comments from members of the public? Seeing none, I'm prepared to accept a motion.
I make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with the Oakers Company for audiovisual upgrades to the Town Hall Central Meeting Room in an amount not to exceed $63,589.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. We are approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next on our giant agenda is to consider the agreement with Colonial Municipal Group for a 2025 Chevrolet Silverado for the Department of Public Works. Is Randy on the line? Where are you?
I don't see him. Nope, there he is.
There he is. Can you hear, can you hear us, Randy? Or Kathy, do you want to begin while we're?
I believe, oh, it looks like he's off mute now. Randy? Nope. I believe it's part of the DPW's fiscal '25 capital program to get a new replacement truck. So it's a, it's a typical pickup, pickup truck kind of vehicle, and it is from the state contract.
So.
Is Randy?
So I'll ask, and either Randy or you can answer, question I ask all the time for these vehicle purchases. This is, I assume, this is replacing, or is this replacing a vehicle? And if it is, how will that replacement, the vehicle that is being replaced, what is happening to that? How is it being disposed of? Or will it continue to be in the fleet as well?
Sounds like Randy's is not.
Randy, either you're speechless or your, your mic is off.
I think he's trying to connect to the audio.
Yeah, it says it's connecting to audio. I, I'm sorry. I don't know the answer to that.
Randy, maybe try calling in.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, there you go.
Yes.
Yeah, there you go. This is a replacement of a 2010 pickup truck that has 262,000 miles on it with a plow.
In other words, wear and tear.
Well-used, well-used.
So we do have to replace this, or it's, it's going to be very costly to repair it as we have had to repair many other things, and my maintenance budget is just increasing because of it.
So how will the vehicle, the vehicle that it is replacing be disposed of?
We would probably either auction it or trade it in.
So.
Depending on what it's worth, and I, we have to still get a, a value from the, from the vendor.
So then the, the price on this contract does not reflect the trade-in value. It's the, if you will, the gross contract, and in fact, it may be net if there's a trade-in?
Correct.
Got it. Liz, any questions?
Do you see any issue getting the truck? I see the date as April 30th. Is it on back order or?
It's a 2025 model.
Okay.
The original quote that Randy had gotten for the budget, I believe, was for a 2024 model, but when I sent the contract to the vendor, he said that it would have to be a 2025, so he gave me a new quote. And so that's the reason that it's going to take a while.
Okay. But this was, it's still covered by the FY '25 capital budget?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
And no, I don't know when it's coming in.
Okay.
As I do not know any of the, usually it's eight months to a year at this point.
Right. They haven't, I think they're just starting to make the 2025s.
So what color is it, Randy?
Red.
Bill, any questions?
It's red, and it's going to have a Hingham DPW sticker. It should. I'm shocked. Yeah, so Randy, just, just for the public certification, I know that all your vehicles are multi, multipurpose, multi-used. This is going to be plowing, and what else will be used for it?
This, this vehicle is primarily used for sign replacement and sign maintenance. Basically, that's why we've had it so long. Usually, we replace them within eight years, and this has been deferred. So it's, it's mainly for sign maintenance and snow plowing.
Great. Thank you.
And Randy, you're really, you're, you're right on to point out that there is a trade-off between putting this off and the increased costs of ongoing maintenance. And there comes a point that it really makes sense to make the replacement. So thank you for.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Especially during the winter when vehicles break down and we cannot use them out there fighting snow and ice.
Right. So the replacement, the, the cost of repair is not only the literal cost of repair, but it's also the opportunity cost of not having the vehicle available.
Correct.
So, yeah. So I, I'm fully on board. Tom, anything to add?
Nope. Randy covered it all, Henry.
Any comments from members of the public? Seeing none, I'm prepared to accept the motion.
I will make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign. I will make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Colonial Municipal Group for a 2025 Chevrolet Silverado for the Department of Public Works in an amount not to exceed $67,787.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. We move on to, um, the next item where we have Randy and Kathy, uh, also in the batter's box, uh, to consider the agreement with Stewart's Power Equipment, Inc. for a lawnmower and related parts and accessories for the Department of Public Works. Randy, please, uh, if you could address that.
Sure.
And in particular, if you could explain the price tag for a lawnmower that's over $70,000.
So this lawnmower, the one we specked out and actually put in for was 110,000. That was a Toro mower, and this is a 12-foot mowing span, which does all the school fields and all our fields. The mower that we have has 57,000 hours on it. It's a 2014, and it's basically past its life. The vendor won't even give us a, 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 um, any money for it as a trade-in. So what we have done is, because we couldn't get one, another Toro, um, for at least a year because of the production processes, um, we went out and went to another vendor, and we did get a, um, from Stewart's Power Equipment, another lawnmower, which was only 70-something thousand, and we're going to save some money there. We also got trailers to trailer it, um, so we're saving some money there. And the, the new lawnmower is a 12-foot span. It just doesn't have air conditioning. It's an open cab, but it does have a, a overhang for shade.
So this is not the lawnmower I'm used to, where you, you've got the pull string and you pull it, you try to get it going. This is, this is something, uh, a lot more sophisticated.
Absolutely. There's actually three decks on it, two that come up. They're wing decks.
Yep.
And they come up, and there's a one main deck in front of it. So it's, it's, it's quite more elaborate than your regular lawnmower.
What is the expected useful life for this new V, new lawnmower?
Uh, I'm looking seven to 10 years.
Wow. Liz, any questions?
Were you hoping to have the mower for this summer season, or was this always for next year?
Uh, I am hoping to have it very, very soon because it isn't stock.
Oh, okay. Okay, great.
So yes, this plowing sea, this, this mowing season.
Okay, great. And again, this is part of the capital budget for FY25?
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mr. Ramsey?
Uh, no specific questions. I'm familiar with the type of mower Randy, um, Randy ascribed to us, so thank you.
Joe, can I note that?
Please.
We're going to auction the other one. I might buy it, and I could do my lawn in three minutes, two passes.
You could do the entire block in two minutes. Any member of the public with comments or questions? Hearing none, I am prepared to take a motion.
I'd make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Stewart's Power Equipment Incorporated for lawnmower and related parts and accessories for the Department of Public Works in an amount not to exceed $70,952.69.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Randy, thank you. Okay. Next item on our agenda is to consider the agreement with Minuteman Doing Business as Allegiance Trucks for a log loader and snow fighter for the Department of Public Works. And we have Randy and Kathy again. So Randy, please explain this one.
So number 19 is the log loader, and it's a 2015 that we're replacing, and has 35,000 miles on it. And there is a timeframe when you should be replacing these, um, due to the stresses that it, that it occurs during regular, uh, work. And we're doing that, and there's, um... This is available, and we should be, actually, I should think we would have it within three months. The Snow Fighter is a six-wheel dump, uh, international, and, um, that will be replacing a 2013 with 31,000 miles on it, which is quite rusted out also. And that will have a, a plow and a sander on it. That, we don't have the chassis in. I don't know exactly when that's going to be available.
So I, I note on the contractor that we just approved, it had a, a completion date of December 31, 2024. This one has a date of December 31, 2025. Why such a long delay?
Because we don't have the chassis, and it's, it's a long time coming for these vehicles to get the chassis to come in and then put all the, the dump bodies or, uh, whatever type of bodies we're using.
Got it.
Such as the log loader.
Could you explain why the town needs a log loader?
Uh, well, anytime we do tree work, um, we have logs that are a ton, 2,000, 2,000 or better pounds, and in order to get them off the street and off the, uh, public way, we have to load them onto a truck and bring them to the transfer station in order to have them get ground up. So it's, it's out there working on a daily basis when we're taking down trees to pick up the large, large trunks in order to get them off the road and as, uh, clean up as we see fit, especially in storms.
Yep. Bill, any questions?
And no questions.
Liz?
Kathy, just a question about the procurement process. Is this part of the state contract?
This is an MAPC contract. They partner with the Greater Boston Police Council for, um, cars and trucks, uh, for a contract, so that's, um, where this one's from.
Okay.
Basically, the same thing that's already been competitively procured and available to the town.
Okay, great, thank you.
Tom, anything to add on this?
Not tonight, no.
Great. Any member of the public with comments or questions? Hearing none, I'm prepared to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Minuteman Doing Business as Allegiance Trucks for a log loader and snow fighter for the Department of Public Works in an amount not to exceed $624,819.9.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Thank you. And Randy?
Thank you.
Thank you for, for all your diligence here. The town really benefits from your work, so we appreciate it. And I know it's not just you, uh, and it's not just Kathy, it's, it's a group, but, uh, the two of you really have, have made a, a great contribution to the town in, in bringing this to our attention, making sure that we stay on top of it, so we're not caught in a storm, you know, shorthanded and short, without the right equipment, so, so thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda. To consider the agreement with Preferred Mechanical, Inc. for emergency replacement and repair of two air handlers and related equipment at Lincoln School Apartments. Art, I think you're going to be working on this with Kathy.
Yes, I'm stepping in for Jen Orem, our, uh, land use coordinator, uh, who is also leading the ZBA meeting this evening. Uh, I just have a, a little bit, little bit of background to provide. Uh, we, you provided a fair amount of information in your packet. The purpose here is to replace two air handlers that service, uh, hallway common area space in the Lincoln School Apartments. The, uh, air handlers are both over 25 years old, they're at their end of their use, expected useful life, they're performing at a very low level, and as a result, uh, hallway spaces, particularly in the upper floors, get, get very hot. So the goal here is to replace the air handlers, and in doing so, to reduce the, uh, the, the heat in the common area, the, the hallways within, uh, both buildings of the Lincoln School Apartment. This, the, these, uh, air handlers have been on the, uh, capital needs assessment for the facility, and, um, we have the opportunity to, to address them now.
We, um, although it's, um, in some ways, I mean, not in some ways, it's, it's definitively a deferred maintenance project, um, in this case, we, uh, requested an emergency approval by DCAM, uh, to do this without competitive, a full-blown competitive procurement, uh, given the, um, you know, the elderly population, the level of heat that's been, uh, measured in, in the hallways, that it was a, you know, a pretty, um, dangerous situation. And so we made the argument to DCAM that it was, that we really needed to do these repairs, um, and they approved.
Right, so we, we have the letter that you sent on, uh, that was sent on July 24th, and it looks like they approved the same day on July 24th. And, um, and I do understand the urgent nature of this. Bill, any questions?
No, how long will these, uh, new ones last, as our, what's it, 20 years?
I don't have a specific number in front of me, but this, this is kind of capital replacement will, will serve the town and the, and the facility well for years.
Great, thank you.
Liz?
Um, I, I appreciate you seeking the emergency approval, um, and I, I hope that this work will be done, um, as soon as possible. I know it says the term of the contract is through December 31st, so obviously, if there's anything we can do to help expedite this, um, I see this as, as a, an urgent health concern, um, and certainly am, am happy to help in any way to get this done as quickly as possible.
Thank you. I think it really was a matter of whether they can get the parts and equipment that they needed, um, yeah, and so I, I put on some extra time, hoping that, you know, it will be done sooner. I, I don't have a, the latest update from Preferred Mechanical, but, um, I didn't want to shortchange the contract term. I, I think it's hopeful that they'll get it before then, but. They couldn't order the equipment until this was approved, so.
And I, and I do note that it comes with a one-year warranty on all equipment and the supplied labor. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, from, uh, as quoted by Preferred.
Yep. Tom, anything you wanted to add on this one?
Nope, I'm good, thank you.
And Art, anything else?
Nope.
Any member of the public, comments or questions? Hearing none, I'm prepared to accept a motion.
I'd make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Preferred Mechanical Incorporated for emergency replacement and repair of two air handlers and related equipment at Lincoln School Apartments in an amount not to exceed $72,840.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. It is approved. Thank you.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next item on our agenda is to consider the agreement with, how do I pronounce this?
Camoin, Camoin Associates.
Associates. Is that French too? Camoin. Camoin Associates LLC for supporting the creation of an economic development strategy plan for the town of Hingham. And we, again, we have the team of Art and Kathy Riley.
I'll, I'll try to provide the, some quick background here. This is a, a project that we've been in discussion about for some time, and it's certainly related to the, uh, select board goals for FY25, something we'll touch on in a few minutes. The purpose of this project is, is to help the town define a path forward to attract new revenue and economic development in a way that also enhances the town's character and quality of life. To do that, we're looking to, to get the support of a consultant, and through a competitive RFP process, we identified Camoin Associates, an upstate New York, uh, economic development consulting firm, as an ideal, uh, service provider. A, a, a five-member, uh, RFP review team, uh, partic, participated in the process, in addition to myself, Emily Wentworth, our community planning director, Allison Quinn, the town planner from, uh, Rockland, who was participating in the project, and I'll describe that in a moment, as well as representation from the HDIC in, uh, Hingham Down, the Hingham Downtown Association. We found this, this company the, the ideal, uh, partner to move forward, to help the, the town do a few things. First, identify our competitive position. I've, I've found, in my own experience, that different people have different opinions about how Hingham can best compete for new investment. That will also include, uh... An, an understanding of how, uh, our competitive position relates to, uh, relevant opportunities in this post-COVID marketplace, uh, the commercial real estate market, and, and business, how business is done has changed rapidly over the past few years, and we have the opportunity, I think, to figure out how to take advantage of all that. And finally, deliver practical roadmaps or implementation plans to help us identify how to map that competitive position to economic opportunities in the marketplace to facilitate investment in, in our commercial districts, South Hingham, the shipyard, Route 3A corridor, as well as looking at our, uh, our, at our Hingham, uh, square area. The project will cost all in $75,000. I did mention earlier that, uh, we're working alongside the, the town of Rockland, who will participate in a joint, uh, assessment of opportunities in the South Hingham area. Given their control and interest in development along Route 28, 228, and our interest in seeing growth within the South Shore Park, I think we have a, a great opportunity to work with one property owner, two communities, and set a shared agenda. That's, that's the, I guess, the long and short of it, but I'm, I'm open to any questions.
Could you explain the funding? Because you said it's ARPA funds. How does this qualify?
We, uh, identify this as, as a project that is supportable through ARPA for promoting the town's long-term economic development. It's, it's an allowed activity, and we have, uh, set aside and secured approval for this project, uh, through Plymouth County.
Liz?
How, how much was that approved amount?
It's, it's approved at 75,000.
It is 75, okay.
And we're looking, uh, we're for support from Rockland in the $5,000 range. So the, the maximum contribution from the town through our, through our assets will be $70,000.
Okay. But again, we're hoping that comes from ARPA funds and not from?
It will come exclusively from ARPA funds and not the operating budget, yes.
We are also hoping that for a couple of private partners to offset some of the costs.
Yes, okay.
But that's just not confirmed yet. We're, we're.
Okay. And I see there's, so the, the consultant, um, will do this assessment, is, interview staff and stakeholders, and then will they be doing the community outreach? Will they be facilitating public meetings?
They will be putting the, the meetings together. Obviously, uh, town staff will be central to all of this, will certainly be present, and will be, uh, will be engaging as partners.
Okay.
You know, we're, we're looking for the, a consulting team to support us and to support the town, not to step back and, and see what they do, which is entirely the opposite.
Okay. And I understand there were three bids received. Was this, were they all pretty competitive, or what, what was the range in terms of cost?
Well, two of the three bids we received were within, uh, the maximum obligation that we identified in the RFP. This project was, or, or Camoin Associates was not the, the lowest cost. Of, of the two that were, that fell within our $75,000 cap, one was slightly less expensive, but was not nearly as responsive to what we were looking for and what we think Hingham needs. And that wasn't just my opinion, that was a shared opinion amongst all the reviewers who participated.
Okay, great. And when do you see this work? When would this start? Is it now through December 30th?
Well, contingent on your, uh, your approval, we'll, we'll have a kickoff meeting, uh, we're already, we already have one on the books for Monday, and we'll proceed, and we expect to have the entire project done by the end of December. the entire project done by the end of December. We are staggering the work so that we can address South Hingham separately and first. So, of the four public engagement sessions that we're scheduling, we will do the South Hingham-focused session first. And for the implementation plans or roadmaps, we'll complete the South Hingham roadmap first, and we expect to have that in hand in mid-November.
Okay, great, thank you.
Bill?
No specific question, just a comment to say I'm thrilled to see this moving along. It's much needed, and glad to see it progressing.
What will the deliverable look like? What will the town physically be receiving?
Well, I think what the town will receive is a document that will summarize how Hingham is positioned competitively in this market. It will receive a document that identifies the kinds of opportunities that we can compete for, and for each of our development districts, essentially, a sequence table of steps that might relate to zoning, might relate to infrastructure, it might relate to marketing, it might relate to state engagement around what we need to do in each of those different areas to attract new investment and job creation.
Great. Tom, anything you wanted to add?
Nope, thank you, Art.
Comments or questions from members of the public? Seeing none, I am prepared to take a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the town administrator to sign the agreement with Camoin Associates LLC for supporting the creation of an economic development strategic plan for the town of Hingham in an amount not to exceed $75,000.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. We are approved.
Thank you, Art.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a discussion of appropriate usage of 30 Summer Street, and I believe we have JR Fry.
I think I'll probably do this one.
Okay, great.
So, back in April of '23, town meeting authorized the select board to purchase this property at 30 Summer Street, which is a very small property, .2 acres or so, just adjacent, on the water, adjacent to the Rotary on 3A. Last year, the town authorized us to spend $28,000 out of our auction money to improve the property. Just so you know, to date, we've actually only improved the roof, just because we're not sure without a known use. I'm not quite sure what to do with the bathrooms or the layout, or how we want to design all that. So, we haven't pulled the trigger on the next steps on improvements. But to that end, I think, you know, we've heard several potential uses that might make sense for this property. I think different people have different ideas of what could be done there. Some of what we've heard to date are rec department programs, public bathroom availability for the Maritime Center at Barnes Wharf, maybe raise the building straight up and put up, and put a baccarat there, I've heard that too. A welcome center for the South Shore, for the Upper South Shore. A privately-owned oyster company expressed an interest. We had privately, had a privately-owned, a private-owned venture capital firm express an interest to make that a temporary home. Perhaps even bike repair and bike rental company could, has expressed interest. I've heard a lot, as you can imagine, a lot of offices in this building think it would be a great town hall annex and could perhaps put some offices over there. I'm not sure that's real. But then, also, we've talked to Harbor Media, our partners over there, and they've expressed that that might be something that would work for them. A whole myriad of potential uses. I've heard from frankly, several members of this board that a harbor use would be appropriate. It's on the harbor, right? One of our issues with that is that there's no access to the water from the property, at least not now. So, that's something to consider too. So, I think what we've heard from the Harbor Development Committee to date is they think it would be helpful to ask the town what the town thinks about the public, what they think about potential uses of that property. So, to that end, they had suggested a survey, they had given us some potential language to use. Joe, you and I worked together last week with Emily Wentworth to try to come up with a survey that we would be comfortable issuing if that's what the board wants to do. It's capital I on the if, but whatever you guys decide tonight, there's a survey ready to go if you want to pull the trigger on that. We could do that tomorrow.
So, I think soliciting the comments from members of the public would be helpful. I know the Harbor Development Group is interested. They, I think that first crack at a survey, I've looked at it, others have looked at it, and I think we've come up with a survey questionnaire that we could post on the website, make available in general to the public, in a form that they could complete online, click the submit button, they'd come in. We should have a reasonable period of time that it would be available, and then we can take their views into account. I think you're right that there are numerous opportunities, and it's, I think, useful to hear how members of the public view this property. Bill, what are your thoughts?
So, but my first question is, Tom, did the leadership of the Harbor Development Committee have input into the survey? Did they review what we're putting out?
Not yet, but so they sent the first draft of a survey. We just kind of, we just cobbled this together in the last few days. So, I would, what I would respectfully ask is if we are going to post this, I'd like to send it back especially to Marco, make sure he has laid eyes on it and understands. I've talked to him several times, told him that we updated it, he understands that, but I've not talked to him about the language of it, I just want to make sure that he's good with it. I think that's the right move.
Yeah, I'm off of the survey, but I, yeah, just if you could run it by Marco to make sure he's comfortable with it, maybe have some suggestions.
Okay.
That'd be great. But, you know, I have my own thoughts on what should go there, but I'm really interested to see what the public thinks. And I think a survey to solicit some input from our residents is a really good start to figuring out what we're going to do with that property and to make it the best use possible, so it can be enjoyed and used by as many residents as possible. So, I think this is a great start to the process, hoping that we can move this along and maybe get an article this year. But I think this is where we should start.
Liz?
I agree, in full support of sending out a survey, gathering public input, certainly with the Harbor Development Committee's input and Marco's kind of approval as he sees fit and what fits in with the vision for the harbor area. But, I mean, my ideal vision is a long-term plan for this, for this property that benefits the community, and so that's the piece that I'm certainly interested in hearing from the public. And then, in the short term, you know, making, making some money on it to cover the debt service. So, I'm-
Just by the way, to that end, I had the feeling you were going to bring that up, I just wanted to point out that it's about $130,000 right now in annual debt service. Obviously, that wanes over time, that reduces over time, but right now, it's about $130,000.
Okay. So, yes, so I think great, great next step is distributing the survey online, obviously, I think is the easiest way, but I would like to see some hard copies available at the Center for Active Living in the library, so we can gather as much input from as many people as possible. So, thank you for working on this and putting this together.
So, Bill and Liz, I think if, we have a proposed questionnaire here, we certainly make sure that Harbor Development looks at it, but if either one of you have comments or recommendations to add to this, that would be great. This document reflects my views as to, I think, a good starting point for this. And, but I'm not sure it really addresses something, Liz, that you pointed out, which is there may be a short-term and there may be a long-term solution. And while we are searching for a long-term solution, is there a way to get some revenue coming in now in the short term? And so, that's a distinction. In terms of use, we all may have a long-term goal that's, that's great, but until we are able to implement that, what's our short-term use? So, I think we need to keep that in mind as well. So, Tom, what do you view as the next step with this?
So, I'll send this to Marco tonight after our meeting, and talk to him tomorrow, get his feedback, and incorporate that feedback, if he has any, into the survey. If, Bill or Liz, if you have any feedback and you want me to incorporate something different, just send that off to me, we'll get that finalized, and then I'll talk to IT, get it in the proper form, so it can be posted to the website, so it's fillable online, and then, like you said, Liz, we'll do some printed versions in the senior center and the library.
Great. Any member of the public have input on this issue right now? Bill?
Yeah, I just want to encourage people that when we do get this posted, to please offer your opinion and give us your thoughts. We're really going to take everything seriously as we figure out a course of action for 30 Summer. Thank you.
Great. And they'll be, once it's posted, they'll, an email will go out, and that message will certainly be incorporated. That's great. Anyone else? Okay, we will then move on to the next item on our agenda, which is a review of downtown traffic calming with Mr. JR Fry. Okay, JR, make us calm, please.
Good evening, and thank you for having me. So, if you'd like to, I think we can start with the memo from Vanass, and we'll just go straight to the, we can put that up on the... Yeah, and if you could just go straight to the plan. No, it's the last page in that memo. Okay. So, over the course of the last almost year now, we've been working at various traffic calming strategies and looking into lightly what else might be done. And so, what we do know is that we put up the speed feedback signs, and they had a demonstrable effect, reducing speeds downtown roughly five miles per hour, and in line with what the newly implemented speed limit is throughout the downtown business district, which is 25 miles per hour. So, we took a, an update on that, I believe it was in January, and downloaded data in June to see if that had continued. And what we saw was that over the course of that six months, there was basically no change, there was no statistical difference, and people were continuing to drive in a, what we would consider a safe manner, at or near the 25 mile per hour posted speed limit. So, we did, over the course of the last month, attempt to implement what's called an iSpy feature in the software that runs the speed feedback signs, and unfortunately, we hit a glitch with that. We're working with the manufacturer to resolve it, but in the meantime, we've turned the signs back on, so that we can observe the effect that we know that they've had.
And JR, just the intent of that was to record the speeds with the sign off, so you could see what it was against the speeds with the sign on, but they ran into a software glitch.
So, and unfortunately, we didn't collect data for a couple of weeks, but what, basically, the long and the short of that piece of it is that we do know that the signs have provided their intended function. So, there are a couple other initiatives that we've also been working on, and they are related to a little bit of everything from traffic calming to pedestrian accommodations. And so, one piece that, where we've provided some conceptual work is the plan that you see before you at Fountain Square, which is the intersection of Lincoln and North Street. And so, our design consultant, who's joined us, it's Jake Carmody from Vanass and Associates, and Vanass very kindly assisted us with developing this plan consistent with both traffic calming and traffic safety goals in mind. And the, the plan as presented looks at the Lincoln Street and the Lincoln Street Spur as they exist currently, and would propose to eliminate the Lincoln Street Spur as an unnecessary additional street, which if you, if you maintain it as it currently exists, it's effectively three different intersections, whereas we can reduce that to one vehicle intersection by eliminating the Spur. The amount of traffic on the Spur is very light. The one benefit it does offer to those who utilize it is that it does provide a little bit of on-street parking. So, one of the things that we looked to, that we were also looking to improve is pedestrian accommodations through this portion of the corridor in downtown. So, we wanted to increase access for pedestrians into what is currently an isolated traffic island, as well as significantly improve the pedestrian accommodation along North Street. So, what you can see there is new sidewalk going along the entirety of that north side of North Street. Yes, exactly. And that would provide a continuous pedestrian access from what currently exists, connecting several homes within that area, and connecting to a crosswalk further up North Street, as well as providing additional access to people coming down Lincoln Street and also wanting to access either through that traffic island where the Benjamin Lincoln, excuse me, where the Abraham Lincoln statue is, and just being able to enjoy that open space, which is downtown. But again, it's currently very isolated. One of the things that we were looking at also is the ability to traverse this area if you have any kind of disability, or if you're not able easily to move around, if you have any kind of mobility issue. And so, one of the things that we were looking at was that mid-block crossing, and the reason for that is that it significantly shortens the distance that a person who has a mobility challenge needs to traverse to make that movement from north to south, from Lincoln Street down to North Street. And if you are, there are some historic locations within this neighborhood, and if those, if you're either on a tour, or if you're just walking around and trying to observe some of the historical sites around town, this also provides, you don't have to traverse grade as much. The Lincoln, that Lincoln Street, that portion of Lincoln Street has a reasonably significant rise. So, in addition to the length that people would have to, the increased length or distance that they'd have to travel, you also have to climb more, basically. We did do a preliminary review of traffic at this intersection, and we determined that the intersection as shown would not increase delay to our motorist travelers. Another element that it does is it squares up that intersection. So, what most people are familiar with now is as they come to actually the two intersections with Lincoln Street, whether it's the Lincoln Street Spur or Lincoln Street itself, at both of those locations, you currently have to look far over your shoulder, to the point where you actually lose peripheral vision for oncoming traffic. And so, by squaring that intersection up, it allows drivers to be able to view, you know, the risk of entering- know, the risk of entering an intersection in a very comprehensive way, and without significantly losing that perception on the offside. To address the parking issue, we did scooch the sidewalk along that frontage, along the Benjamin Lincoln House frontage and the frontage of the traffic island. We scooched that in to provide for parallel parking through that space. So that achieves, I want to say, it's about 120 feet of parking spaces, which would accommodate a couple buses and obviously many cars, six, seven cars. So that is one thing that we've been looking at. Another element that we've been looking at, and I, and has been approved by the select board to move forward with, is the installation of RRFBs in front of the post office. And so we are moving forward with that as quickly as we can. I'm still waiting on a final price from our contractor on that, because we may need to extend the height of the light poles, the streetlights, that are right there at the crosswalk, to make sure that we can maintain the Boston Gaslamp light on top, and also have our signage, where it won't impede pedestrians who are walking by the sign. So those light poles may have to increase in height a few feet in order to accomplish that, and we're prepared to move forward with that, and we have the funding which was encumbered to do that work. I don't know if you want to show that, that's on the...
It's on the set, right?
Yeah. There it is, right in the middle. And that one is just with... There we go. And I just kind of cribbed that out to show approximately what that would look like, but that is the proposal for the location of the RRFBs. Briefly going back to Lincoln Street, there is also, for the mid-block crossing on Lincoln Street, that would need to be, we would need to have an RFB installed there as well, to make sure that drivers, as they crest the hill and come down, we have the sight distance, but we want to make sure, based on the anticipated use of that crosswalk, we want to make sure that there's heightened awareness of its use. And then lastly, you know, we have generally, you know, we've received several comments from the public about different things that they might like to see, and most of these we've discussed previously here in the room. These are things like speed tables, or raised crosswalks, and speed humps is another element of that. One thing we've talked about is changing parking configurations and the movement of traffic through downtown by changing it to possibly a one-way. Anything, or changing pieces, portions of North and South Street to a one-way. But any piece of that, anything of that magnitude, we wouldn't move forward with without a significant planning study, which would be headed up by Emily Wentworth and the Planning Department, to make sure that all of the considerations were, you know, well thought out before we move forward with any kind of plan along those lines. With respect to some of the physical changes, I guess the first thing that we would ask is, based on the data that we currently see, we believe that we've addressed the speed condition generally. Now, there may be a different perception or a different belief on that, and we're open to, you know, hearing that out and getting a better understanding of additional concerns that people have, but we think that the signs themselves seem to be managing the speed issue as it is. So we wouldn't propose to change the physical nature of the street at this time in order to further impact driver speed where we think it's been addressed, where the data tell us that it's been addressed. Do you have any comments, questions?
So before I do, Deirdre, are you here to speak with this, or?
Yeah.
Please.
Do we sit down, or do you want to stand?
Please just identify yourself.
Deirdre Anderson, here on behalf of the Hingham Historical Society, 34 Main Street. We also are the stewards of the Old Ordinary at 21 Lincoln Street, and the Benjamin Lincoln House at 181 North Street. And I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to traffic calming in downtown Hingham, a topic that we are deeply, deeply interested in as we work with the community to drive heritage tourism. We have been grateful for the Traffic Committee's initiative on the downtown business safety zone, and the installation of the speed calming measures. What we are, we're particularly supportive of looking at the intersection of Lincoln and North Street in order to improve pedestrian access to the Benjamin Lincoln House, and between the Benjamin Lincoln House, the Old Ordinary, New North Church, and the Lincoln Statue. As many know, the town has given significantly to the investment in those historic properties, both through community preservation funds, most significantly, and Green Bush Trust Funds. And when we began the permitting journey for the Benjamin Lincoln House to transition it from a residence to a museum, the first question we had at our Planning Board meeting in 2020 was, it's very difficult to get to the Benjamin Lincoln House. We did work with the town, we invested in a preliminary survey to suggest crosswalk and sidewalk locations, and this work with Van Ness is a great evolution from that. We have held several socialization meetings, because we've been working with the Traffic Committee on this concept from Van Ness. We held two socialization meetings about this concept with the parishioners at New North Church. We also held a socialization meeting inviting any residents on Lincoln and North Street. We held that at the Hingham Heritage Museum. And overall, there was support for this concept. Interest was primarily for traffic calming, reducing speed at the Lincoln and North Street intersection, and reducing dangerous intersection behavior at the Lincoln Street spur, namely when cars are heading north, coming out of the spur onto Lincoln Street. Oftentimes, they forget to look right, so that was, we heard that feedback from the community. There was some concerns about a rapid flashing beacon in a mid-block crossing in a historic district. We talked at length about mid-block crossings. Not only are we supportive, very supportive of a mid-block crossing for accessibility needs, and residents with mobility issues not having to walk a distant, additional distance to move between, for instance, the Old Ordinary and the Benjamin Lincoln House, but because we have witnessed over our years that that is the human behavior, like that is the path that people take. So we would be very supportive of that. We've also heard our neighbors at New North were concerned about loss of traffic. They were excited to know that there would possibly be additional traffic on the north side of North Street, south side of Lincoln Statue Park. So we are, as I mentioned, you know, very supportive of this concept. We do really want to emphasize, especially as we're talking about economic development tonight, we're coming into two very important commemorative years in this country, not only the commemoration of the 250th anniversary of the American Revolution, but in 2026, America's 250th birthday, and FIFA World Cup at Gillette, and the tall ships. And so we absolutely expect an increase in heritage tourism. Just for some statistics, this summer alone, the Hingham Heritage Museum has had a 50% increase in visitation over 2023. And so we really expect that to, and of course, the Benjamin Lincoln House has been, we've offered tours there. We had over 70 people this past month alone paying for tours and visiting for tours, and that's without us even moving beyond very basic advertising and promotion. So we do believe that traffic, pedestrian traffic in this area will increase, and so we're here to help and continue to partner with the town in whatever way we can. I'm happy to take any questions, too.
Sorry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, thank you. All right, great. Thanks a lot. First of all, appreciate the presentation, JR, and, you know, Deirdre, thank you for your input, too. One of the things I was going to ask is, yeah, the Historical Society's position on this proposal, so that's great, and I appreciate you also doing some of the due diligence with the neighbors and getting it out there to do a couple things. So JR, can we go to the back of the map?
Yep.
All right, so let's, I'm going to first just quickly address the crosswalk at the post office. I have been, for two years now, asking about something to be done there, so I appreciate you raising it today, and I want to move this quickly. I will note, though, I do not recall any vote by this board where we agreed to put those up. I think I would ultimately get there, but can you refresh my recollection on when this board took a vote to allow that, those RFBs?
I think it was...
Because I don't recall it, and I've been following this issue pretty closely.
Can you get that up, Mark, at the post office?
Yes, yes. Let's go to the post office first, if you don't mind.
There we go.
So, yeah, the recommendation came from the Traffic Committee, I believe, last summer, and I also believe that it was, I thought that it came before the board, but I could be wrong.
We discussed it. We didn't, I don't think we voted on it, so I think we need to be very careful of moving forward on this without a formal vote and without public input. As we know from the speed signs, which I am heralding as a giant success, my, much appreciation to you and Jeff, any work you've done there, but I want to do something at this crosswalk, big time. I've been wanting to do something since I've been on this board. This is good, but I don't think we took a vote on this yet, and I think we probably need to get more public input into what we're going to do there. I would like to put this on a short timeframe, and maybe get this done by the end of next month, in terms of soliciting public input, developing a course of action, and then implementing a course of action. I'd like to get it done over the next four weeks if we can, but, and I would just quickly defer to Tom, if he recalls a formal vote being taken by this board on a course of action there.
I actually don't either. I do think we talked about it, but I agree with you, but I don't recall a vote, JR. It doesn't mean that I'm right either, but I don't recall a vote, unless one of you guys do. I just don't.
I don't recall one, but we can certainly, we'll make, we'll have Sharon go over our minutes to make sure that we know one way or the other. And Bill, you're exactly right, this is something that I think requires public input and due consideration. I do note, many people are away in August and soliciting public input right now, and think it's going to be done in four weeks, maybe a little accelerated. I'm thinking, I'm thinking maybe early September, get this done.
That's great. And Tom, you know, let's stay on this, you know, because this is, this comes up, we discuss it, and then it falls off, falls off the radar, because other issues come our way. So let's stay on this thing, and get this developed, voted on, implemented in September. I think Joe's timeline is a good one, but that is a very, very dangerous crosswalk. I would submit to people that might be the most dangerous crosswalk in the entire downtown area. So I like this idea, but I think we need to circulate a little more.
Bill, can I just dig a little bit? I just want to make sure we understand. So the soliciting the input from the public, we'll offer perhaps different solutions and see what people think of them? Is that the idea?
Well, I'm just going to point out, one of the, again, I was a big advocate of the speed signs to slow people down. Again, it's been a big success, but we, this board, was criticized by many in the public saying we didn't properly socialize it. So I would like it, make sure people know we're thinking about this. I also think we need to get input from the leadership of the historic district commission. We, you know, we faced some criticism for not doing that last time. I know that legally we don't have to, but I think it's the right thing to do, before we actually move forward with implementing a plan. But again, I want to do something here, and it's important. It's very, very dangerous. You know, there, within the, I remember in my recent memory, Jeff could refresh my recollection, but there was a childhood at the crosswalk, I've seen so many near misses. The issue is, is that the way the car is positioned, when people walk out, if a driver is not moving at a very slow pace, and has situational awareness of left and right, people can move out quickly, and they're not seen by the, by cars. So I do like this idea, but I just want to make sure we don't move tonight without properly socializing it.
Okay. Very good.
All right. So that's my initial comments on that, but again, I agree with you 100% here that we need to do something, so thank you for bringing this up. Okay, can we go back to the Lincoln, Lincoln Street diagram?
There we go.
All right. So I cannot agree with Deirdre more. You know, we need to do everything we possibly can to slow traffic, as everybody knows, I spoke very passionately about that, when we were doing the, the speed signs in downtown Hingham, and everything we can do is beneficial for our pedestrian community, for our residents, we need to be as safe as possible. So initially, JR, I love the idea of squaring away the stop at Lincoln onto north. You are 100% correct that for a driver in the current condition to move his or her head to the right is a very, creates a very, very difficult sightline currently. While that driver is positioning their head to the right, cars are coming up quickly to that driver's left from Lincoln. So I think this is an improvement, I think it's going to make it safer, and I applaud you and Jeff for your recommendation. Secondly, as Deirdre pointed out, coming off the, what we're going to call, I guess, the Lincoln Street spur, we'll call it that tonight, I like that idea, Deirdre's right, and I think, JR, you mentioned this, too. When a driver comes up from north and goes up the spur and takes a left onto Lincoln, that sometimes they don't see that stop sign, they get confused about, you know, who has the right of way, even though the stop sign is on the telephone pole right there. And that also is dangerous in the sense a driver has to turn his or her red head 90 degrees to the right while traffic is coming up the hill on Lincoln, Lincoln coming at them. It creates a very, very difficult driving condition, so I like the idea of making it safer. The only thing I was going to also add to this, and Deirdre kind of addressed this, is I want to make sure that that spur is still usable and beneficial to the Lincoln House and to the Old Ordinary. Deirdre's point is well taken on me that this town has invested... A Deirdre's point is well taken on me that this town has invested a lot in making that complex safer, but also ready to be enjoyed by the public to the maximum extent possible. So if the Historical Society and Deirdre are comfortable with, you know, I don't know what we'd put in there, if we put gravel in there, or stone, or how we would modify that spur, but we want to make sure that we could still get vehicles down there so people can still get access to the Lincoln House, the Old Ordinary, and they can enjoy to the maximum extent possible. So I'd like to learn less a little bit about more, about if you're going to completely eliminate the, the spur, put grass there, it's going to be gravel, like the Lincoln, like the beautiful Lincoln driveway that's been put in there by the Historical Society or what. But I'm okay with it, but I, I do think we need to make sure that, that this board does what Deirdre was helping us with, and everybody affected by this change on Lincoln, on North, is aware of it. And we don't have any very passionate objections to removing that, that cut through, that right of way. So that, those, that's my thoughts on the initial proposal. I appreciate your, your work, JR.
Oh, thank you. If I could quickly answer your question regarding what is currently proposed, and that is that, for the most part, that that spur would become vegetated landscape, so effectively lawn. However, it does extend their driveway on the Lincoln Street side by about 30 feet. So, you know, that in itself offers, depending on the width of that driveway and how it extends back out to the, through the right of way, that itself offers the potential for some additional parking, that people could park within the driveway, and, and you'd still have access alongside of those vehicles to drive past. So there's kind of a, a balance there with, they would still have, you know, the extension of the driveway does add a little bit more direct parking that would be associated with their building.
Can I just jump in just real quick? Calling it currently proposed, JR, might be a stretch.
Right.
It's a, it's a concept plan that's-
Yes, a concept.
-discussed between a landscape architect that, that Deirdre and the society have been working with, along with JR and her team, and his team. So I think there's, there's some ideas there, Bill, about what the landscape might, might look like, where that spur currently is, and how it would incorporate the, the current island. But there's no, the reason we're not showing it here tonight is it's very preliminary. There are some legal concerns about access and easements and what we would need for authorization from town meeting or otherwise. We need to iron all lot of that out before we are comfortable calling it a proposal that we would bring to you. So that's why it's not here tonight. But I, I hear you completely about working with the society and trying to understand the, the appropriate use of the land that is currently the spur.
Everything I'm hearing tonight, I am very much supportive of and I like. And my last question would be that Sergeant Kilroy, Sergeant Kilroy, do you have any concerns with now pushing more vehicular traffic onto Lincoln in the lower area with the spur proposal to be eliminated? Obviously, more people will be taking a left onto Lincoln, off to North, if they want to go north, heading toward 3A. Any concerns there with more increased traffic at that intersection?
I don't believe so. I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll take a peek at it more in depth with, with JR. But as of right now, I don't, I don't believe so.
Great. All right. That's all I've got. Thank you.
Just before I turn it over to Liz, so on that specific question that Bill asked, has Van Ness done a, a traffic assessment to see to what extent there'd be increased traffic?
Jake, would you like to speak on that?
We've just looked at it from a preliminary approach, to have an understanding of the amount of traffic at the intersection, but not to the level of exact specific lengths of the turn lanes that we would need. So not, not a full study, but we've looked at just from a preliminary standpoint. And we've, so I propose, so the concept plan showed, we have a left turn lane and a right turn lane on Lincoln Street, as opposed to just a single lane approaching. So in terms of cars coming down to the stop sign, they would have a lane for left and right turn movements. So it would operate similarly to having people today using the Lincoln Street spur if they're heading south and turning right.
Got it. Thanks.
And I did mention, as well, have your attention, is that the, I don't think it was mentioned, but vehicle, the revised geometry for Lincoln Street on the north, the top right corner of Lincoln Street and North Street, today you could probably take that movement from North Street, turning right onto Lincoln. I bet you could go 40 miles an hour there, because it's almost no, barely have to turn your wheel. With this geometry, you'd have to really slow down to turn right from North Street onto Lincoln Street. So just another safety benefit that I wanted to point out.
Well, we like, we like slowing people down in that area. I believe that's great.
So, yeah, so, and that's something that's important, so when we add, when we're adding the, the sidewalk, closing that sidewalk gap along the north side of, of North Street, because that is a gap. There's sidewalk west of the plan and east of the plan on the north side of North Street. We're able to slow cars going across that new crosswalk at, at the intersection.
And if I could just add one more point, too. JR, I don't think there, maybe there is. If I'm wrong, I, I apologize. I don't think we have a crosswalk going to the Old Ordinary from the top of the Lincoln House. Am I correct with that?
That's correct. There's no existing crosswalk across-
It'd be nice to have one there, so people, you know, visitors to the town can get across to both locations.
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Liz?
Thank you. Well, thank you, JR, and Jeff, and the committee for all the work. And I appreciate you coming back every few months to present this. This certainly is a priority for us. As far as the solution at the crosswalk by the post office, I agree that this is, this is really critical for us and something we want to do quickly. I do want to learn from our last experience and make sure that we elicit public input and notify the, the neighbors, the abutters, the Historic Districts Commission, the Hingham Downtown Association, the merchants, so that we can, can get people's input. But I, I think this is a, looks like a good solution, certainly a good interim solution that can be done quickly. I would love to see that happen as early in September as possible with schools starting. It, it just gets even busier down there. As far as the, the Lincoln Street and North Street plan, this looks great. I love the concept. Thrilled to hear Deirdre's input, and congratulations on the tourism this summer. That's very exciting to hear. And I, I think we all know there's a huge potential, and we want to try to, try to optimize that and facilitate that. So what are the next steps? Kind of where we, we know this is conceptual. What, what, what happens next? Is there more public input? Is the planning board involved? Kind of what are, what are your next steps?
So our next steps would be to advance this into a design stage. We'd have to contract to get a survey done. That would be done through Van Ness, and they'd put together all of the traffic design materials that would go into formalizing a design proposal that we would then bring, bring back to you at a future time.
Okay. So where do you see the, the public input providing the most value? Do you feel like you've gotten enough public feedback, or should we be?
I, I think we should definitely put this in front of the planning board and make sure that they're aware of this proposed change. I don't see a lot of, for example, subdivisions happening in the direct vicinity, but nonetheless, it's, it's an appropriate place to vet the concept and make sure that the community has a broad consensus of support for this type of change. Beyond that, we would certainly want to put it in front of Hingham Historical, or from the Historical Commissions, make sure that they're aware of what we're considering, some of the elements that aren't presented here, because we were just focusing on the traffic safety elements. But for example, there are some potential kind of historic benefits that we might, that this plan provides us the space to create, such as there used to be steps coming down from New North Church to the right of way. And so within that bump out where we've expanded, what is, expanded the space coming down the hill from New North Church, we may be able to recreate what that historically looked like. So discussing that with the Historical Commission, making sure that they're on board with the use of an RRFB at the mid-block crossing, making sure that we maintain the historic elements with respect to the existing street lighting that's in that park area, the traffic island area. So with all of those elements, we want to be cognizant of, you know, all of the different perspectives.
Great, great. So what is the timing?
We could move forward with the contract with Van Ness in relatively short order. The, in terms of getting back to the planning board and Historic Commission, I would imagine that that could occur sometime late fall, early winter, with a, with a more cohesive design that has been surveyed and where we've really kind of gotten down into the brass tacks of what it needs to look like.
Okay. And where's the funding coming for, from?
So we have discussed with the Historical Society about the possibility of some element of cost share on the design side. So we would probably look at it, an initial fund coming out of my engineering budget, and then we would look to the Historical Society for other sources of funding to complete the engineering design.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
JR, so really, thank you for, for your work, and I know it's not just you, but, but you're here, so we, we get the chance to thank you. Tom mentioned, I guess, property rights issues, focusing on whether or not there are ownership issues associated with certain of the properties, easements. I just want to make sure that we're not going too far along a path until we get that settled. Is Susan Murphy working on that?
She is, and that's why we backed off of the landscape discussion right now, because I don't think we're ready for that. This, this plan does not require, does not have those legal problems. This is entirety in the right of way, in the Lincoln Street right of way.
So, Tom, my hearing that we could move forward with this plan without concern about-
That's right. Yes. And to the extent we want to landscape it in a different way, that's when we need to engage, well, Susan's already engaged, but-
Okay.
-make sure she's aware, and then perhaps get some articles for town meeting to consider.
Second, I, I don't see this, but have, are there any issues in terms, again, I'm talking about the Lincoln Street area, with respect to the fire department or mass transit accessing the roadways, interfering with any of their activity?
No. All of the turning movements at this intersection are fully, we're fully able to accommodate the largest firefighting vehicles, as well as any buses. It would get a little bit more difficult if there were a long-wheel base vehicle, like a 67-foot tractor trailer, coming down there. But most of them don't use this particular intersection, other than, I think, occasionally as a cut through due to construction elsewhere. But with that said, even those vehicles, they can still make the movements, they just have, it just takes them some more time and a little bit more navigation in order to carefully maneuver through the intersection.
Are there bus stops along this route?
Not at this location. There are no bus stops. So there's, there's the bus that, the 220, I believe, comes up from Quincy and Weymouth, and then that comes up 3A, up Downer, and then down Otis to get to downtown. There was, at one point, also a, it was a low volume, I'm not sure if it was just in the weekend or just in the summer, that kind of hit on Central Street and went from downtown to Central, maybe up to High. And, and then there's, and then there's another bus that comes in from Weymouth on High Street. But this, there's no bus stops in this vicinity.
So you don't see any impact on mass transit-
No.
-as all this. No, I think, you know, what you're proposing is, is in the interest of safety, it's in the interest of public accommodation, and I think it's respecting the best interests of, of the town. And so I, I really look forward to moving forward with this, as they say, with all deliberate speed. Getting to the intersection across from the post office, I guess-
Yes.
-not the intersection, the, the road right at the post office. I mean, I agree with Bill that that is a high priority, high urgency task, and we need to move forward. And I think soliciting public reaction sooner rather than later makes sense. And is that something that you would be doing, Tom? Would, would, I just want to make sure we know who the actors are, so we can get this going.
So I'll work with JR in the morning. We're going to have to design, put together a, I don't know if it's covered, going to be a survey or how we're going to organize it, but with some options for people to review and, and comment on, and get that issued this week, if possible, and then, and then get the feedback over the next, we're probably going to want to leave it out for a week or so, for people to have a chance to, to give us the feedback. We'll collect that, organize it, and I'll distribute it to the three of you, so you can all hear and see what the residents thought.
So JR, are there other options that are on the table for this?
Good. Can I just clarify what I meant by options? Speed bump, speed hump, speed table-
Okay.
-different types of brick-
Got it. Okay.
-speed feedback signs. It's something there, but I don't know in what capacity people are going to, I think that's what you guys are looking for, is-
So, and yeah, there, are there other options? There are always other options. They have cost implications and operations implications. Anything with enough will, it can be overcome. But the question is whether or not it's necessary, and what are the other impacts that, that we don't want to cause secondary impacts? For example, loss of parking. If we, depending on exactly how things get built out, you may end up losing one or two spaces, and we don't necessarily want to do that either, because that's a, you know, that's a very busy, very busy parking area for people accessing both the stores and the post office.
Right. And as people are moving in and out of parking spots, obstructing visibility so that they-
Yeah.
-they, they can do their, what they're doing safely. So I'm glad you mentioned, Tom, mentioned the, the speed humps. Am I correct that I, that you would not be even considering speed hump, humps or bumps without a full review by the planning board? Is that what I heard you say at the beginning?
That, no. I was talking more about traffic circulation.
Okay. Because, the reason I ask is that a number of historic communities, particularly, I just drove through some over the past couple of days, they, they do the bumps. And I'm talking about, you know, areas with snow, as an alternative to signs, in terms of the flashing signs. And I don't know to what extent you have data to suggest that whether or not they are as effective. I can tell you, I went over one of those bumps, and it slowed me down and made sure that I was very attentive moving forward. But, you know, comments I've heard from residents in terms of the flashing signs, some people, they recognize their effectiveness, they also find them offensive, and they, they're not saying, "Don't slow it down," but find an alternative. I know Bill has been, you know, actively supporting the signs. Some residents are contacting me, saying, "Well, give us an option, and then, then we can make a more reasoned assessment." So I'm hoping- So, I'm hoping that you're not waiting for the Planning Board to look at this, but that you're doing some sort of comparison, and if it turns out signs really are the way to go, then we can say, "Yeah, that's it." But, I can just tell you, just my personal experience going through historic towns, they've got the bumps, and it seems to be effective.
So, we did a, like, basically a preliminary look at what the, for example, what the cost would be, and depending on the specific, and this would be, for example, for a raised crosswalk, and depending on the specific location, you'd be looking at an additional $25,000 to $40,000 in capital costs just to address drainage in different elements along those lines. In the long term, it makes it marginally more difficult and thus more expensive when you're repaving roads, because it's a change to the systems that you're using. From the operations, from the snow and ice operations perspective, it's, one of the things that they end up having to deal with is when these, when snow and ice gets caught on the sides, you get ice buildup, you also have the plows coming into that vertical face, and you will occasionally have drivers that if they're, you know, presumably over time, people become aware and learn exactly their, what their root is and how it happens, but if someone has a plow down and they hit that bump, if they're hitting it at speed, it can be very jarring, damage the plow, and possibly cause them to like, you know, headfirst into the steering wheel. So, there are a number of issues, you know, related to that in terms of DPW operations that we'd prefer not to go down that path. That isn't to say that, like you said, other people have chosen differently and, and they're working through it.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's important that, to the extent that we've gotten public feedback, that we can respond, just as you did now. So it's not as if we're proceeding without having asked the questions and gotten the answers. So I think, at the end of the day, you know, we need to do something that's effective for the town, that makes sense, and it sounds like you're going in the right direction. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Liz, it looks like you were about to...
So, well, I was just gonna ask you, are you, so are you envisioning a survey? I guess I was envisioning noticing people and putting it on our agenda for a discussion. Are you envisioning an actual surveying people?
For the...
For option, the post office crosswalk?
No, I was not envisioning a survey.
Okay.
I got, I got the idea that we wanted to solicit public input. I'm not sure what that is if we're not asking them for options. So, tell me what you want me to do, and we'll do it. It's unclear to me.
So, my sense is that we publicize what is being proposed, what is currently being proposed for...
For that.
For that area, right, for the crosswalk. And, I don't know if we're putting it on our, it'll be on our agenda, but we publicize it and invite comments as to what we're, what's on the table. I don't think I was envisioning, and Bill, maybe you had a different view, were you envisioning actually a survey going out?
No, no, no survey. I don't think we should do a survey. I think we should just let people know we're doing it, and we will get feedback from that notification.
Right.
Yeah, so they're always invited to our public meetings, or they can email us with feedback.
Right, so...
Just, so again, for clarity's sake, the current proposal, the word we're using now is what?
The installation of RRFBs at the crosswalk.
With no speed hump, just to be clear, Joe.
Yes.
It does not include a speed hump.
Right, that's what's on it.
I just want there to be no surprise in two weeks when we get back and you say, "You never asked anybody if..."
No, 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 but, but I think the point is that if that's something that people say, "Hey, why don't you consider that?" We'll find out. I don't think we're gonna give them a survey of choose A, B, C, or D.
Understood. I just really don't want there to be confusion.
If I could, so we did do this, we kind of did it after the fact last time, so Tom, I mean, so I think what we did was, we discussed it at a meeting, some residents showed up, they were happy about it, but then we kind of publicized that, hey, this is what we're gonna do, kept it open for two weeks, give us your input, and then we met two weeks later. So, we got a lot of input over email, we had a very well-attended meeting. I think we just used due diligence and advertising our course of action. And Liz, you may, you may have some thoughts, I think you were the chair when we did this.
Okay.
Were you thinking of a survey?
No.
Okay.
No, that's why I wanted to clarify, no survey.
Okay.
No, I don't think we do, and I don't think we're looking to have a list of proposed alternatives either, but I think we're looking to present a clear picture of what's being proposed and soliciting comments on that.
Right.
What's simply RFB signs on a pulse?
Yes.
Got it.
Right.
Yes.
Good, that's very different to what I had envisioned.
Yes, so...
We can do that in a month, Bill. I was sitting here sweating how we're gonna build a new speed hump in a month.
Well, exactly, that's not realistic. So even if speed hump is the long-term solution, this may be a good interim solution. A speed hump cannot be built or, and funded by September, we all know that, so. I, no, my, I think our intention of public input is so that people feel like this is not a surprise when the signs go up.
Okay.
So everyone knows about it as much as we can possibly control, and they have an opportunity to provide feedback, and we will, with our safety professionals, make the best decision in the course of action.
Thank you for the clarity.
Yeah, I mean, I think this, we began the discussion, the area around the post office says this is a high priority, high visibility, highly dangerous area, and I think you've identified an appropriate response here. I think there are other areas where we have the signs, the flashing signs, where the residents have at least contacted me saying, "Why don't we do something else?" And it's those, that's a more general discussion about, should we be looking at speed humps, or I'm not sure what other alternatives should be looking at. That was not intended to be directed specifically to this.
Gotcha.
So, and in terms of what's going on with respect to Lincoln Street?
Yeah.
I think, what you're hearing from all of us is you're on the right track, and we'd like you to go the next step. I think to the extent that you've heard specific questions, that we need additional information from Van Ass or whoever else you're choosing to work with, let's move forward so that we, in a month or two, we now have the next stage before us.
Very good.
Yep.
Excellent.
And to be clear, I think I heard from everyone, we really should work with Deirdre Anderson, is that right?
Yes, as much as possible.
As much as humanly, I hear you.
If you do, if you, just so that members who are...
Can we bring her the microphone? Bring her the microphone.
You'll make her walk over.
I had to say my joke, and now you're gonna walk.
You've gotta work for it.
No, can I, and again, I was, can you just remind me where we left, I mean, the Hang of Historical Society is in, you know, has a real vested interest in safely moving visitors to these properties, and so that is why we talked about with, also with donors from the New North Church community to pursue a public-private partnership to raise money for design of enhancements around Lincoln and North Street. We do, however, also have a vested interest in the timeliness of it, because if that is ripped up in the summer of 2026, that will be, that will dissuade visitation. And so, how we marry all these parallel work tracks of, of getting a design that's acceptable to the community, and the traffic numbers and studies that you want, and then, more importantly, the fundraising, because this would be fundraising that we would do above and beyond what we do annually as a nonprofit organization, and it's substantial, in terms of the numbers you've told me, it's significant. So, what is the appetite? Is this a candidate, you know, something that we could go for CPC funds or in a public works project, is that not desirable for the town?
So, there are a number, when it comes to the design side of it, that's kind of the front-end money that, and I think one way or another, we'll be able to work through that piece. When it comes to construction, that's obviously a much more significant element. We do have the possibility of pursuing different grant funding that would manage several different components of this. So much of this is a complete streets project or a shared streets-for-all project. Those are two different grant programs that Mastot has that significantly improve pedestrian accessibility, and this shows so many safety improvements, both for vehicles and for pedestrians and cyclists, that it would be, I believe, a good candidate for, to receive an award along those lines. We always have our backstop of road construction funding that would be available as well. It is not the preferred method of construction, but it is there. I will say that all of this, when we've looked at it, because most of it is actually removing asphalt, more than anything else, it does come at a little bit lower cost than what we would associate with normal street construction, because you're not putting back the expensive asphalt.
So we're not rebuilding a whole road, this is relatively short.
But I think, what I'm hearing from Deirdre, she wants to know next step and timeline, like what should happen next, so we're not in here two months from now having the same discussion. I mean, is the first step now that we would vote on this plan in maybe a week or two, and that would start the process, or does it need to go to planning, planning first?
It doesn't require a vote for us to proceed with a design.
Right.
And we could come back with a design, preferably to the Select Board, for, so that we could then take it to Planning Board and Historic. And respecting the timeliness issue, you know, I had previously suggested possibly December, January for something like that, but perhaps we can move that forward a little bit quicker, something in the October, November timeframe.
Can I just also point out that we do want to move, if, and I think I hear that we do want to move through this in as expeditious a manner as possible. The HDC, for instance, may not have direct jurisdiction, so we want to bring it to them to make sure we're playing nice in the sandbox, but we have to recognize that that comes with time. So they only meet certain times, they have to get on their agenda, they have to consider it, they may postpone it, I don't know what they would do, and the same comes with the person, with the Planning Board. This is a project that is entirely in the right-of-way. My understanding is that it's the Select Board that has the authority for this project.
100%.
In its entirety. So while we would like to get feedback from everybody, we can't get feedback and do this instantly. So I just want to point out, not in, not that anyone's asked for instantly, you know what I mean? The more we, the more we engage, the longer time it takes. I just want that to be...
Understood.
Yeah.
What is, what is the ideal timing? Obviously done by 2026, but how, what's the timing to not jeopardize the REV 250 events?
Well, I mean, I think the world will most tune in to the commemorative events beginning next April with the, you know, they are expecting, you know, 5 million people to descend on Lexington and Concord, the president will be there, the royal family will be there. So, I think, but that certainly, that is not, I mean, our, we'll be commemorating REV 250, we'll be commemorating for the next decade, but, but Mass, Moat, Mass Office of Travel and Tourism is aggressively pursuing tourism for '25, '26 for these commemorative years.
Okay.
What I'd recommend is that we identify an end date where we'd like this done, and then we're gonna work backwards from that in order to meet that date.
Yep.
And so that may inform us as to the times we're gonna allow for other groups to participate. So, while it's a, you gotta start here and move forward, I want to look at the end and work backwards to make sure that we accommodate the time schedule, we don't interfere with expected events.
Right. I think realistically, to be ready for summer tourism in 2026 would serve us best, and that will, that really begins, you know, Patriots' Day in 2026, April vacation of 2020, April public school vacation of 2026. That would be great for, if we're ready to go with lots of revolutionary fervor.
So with that in mind, we'd be looking at construction in the fall.
Of '25.
Of '25. And that would avoid interfering with...
A year from now.
Yeah, one year from now.
Okay.
All right, so that changes things. So if that's an acceptable timeframe, then what I was gonna suggest may not be necessary. I was gonna suggest that we, at the staff level, talk with the boards, those other boards, and that we perhaps for, we can assess the total cost, perhaps forego grant applications, which are also time-consuming, because you're at the, you're at the room of the granting agencies' timeframes, and that we try to prioritize this within our road-building budget. I know that's not Randy's preferred method, but this is an important project to the entirety of the town and the board. So, my point is, is if we were to take that approach, this doesn't have to take a long time. That said, if we want to be broader spectrum in terms of our outreach, we want to try to find some funding from outside sources, those types of things can be done and perhaps should be done, but they come at the cost of time.
Understood. I mean, I think we set the timeline, we invite our colleagues on the other boards to participate, and I am hopeful that they will collaborate with us and see the importance. As far as the grant, I mean, I think it's all hands on deck to figure that out and get as much grant money as possible.
Yep, and...
It's about their timing, the two of those. Sometimes they only award once a year, sometimes they're rolling though.
Sure.
Right, and so, we may wind up doing both, namely, you apply for the grants, and if it turns out we don't get it, we're still moving forward, but that doesn't mean we don't apply.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yep. So I think staff needs to get together and propose a time schedule that we can then review.
Okay.
And then we will make sure that we adhere to that.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you, thanks for being here.
And we will invite you to those meetings.
Great, thank you. Great, and, okay, great, thanks. And we'll, we'll, we'll continue to socialize with our constituents. This, recording of this meeting will be helpful, I think, for the community, and, and then I think that we still will need a little bit of a cheat sheet about how people can give, you know, if they're invested in this project for the benefit of the community and a green space in our historic downtown, how they could give to that effort financially.
Yep.
Great, okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deiter.
Any other member of the public here with comments or questions? And Sergeant Kilroy, I'm not sure I gave you adequate time if you wanted to add anything to this discussion.
No, sir, thank you.
Okay.
I'm just working with JR and doing what we gotta do.
Great.
Thank you.
Bill or Liz, anything else?
No, thank you. I know this is a huge effort, we appreciate it.
Bill?
Nothing else, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I hesitate to say this, the next item on our agenda is the fiscal year 25 Select Board Goals. I'm not sure at 9:30 this is the right time to be taking this up. I would, my inclination, unless Bill or Liz, you want to do it now, is to push this off to the next meeting. Liz?
I concur.
That's fine with me.
Okay, because I do not want to give it a short shrift, but I think given, given the hour that is likely to happen.
I agree, and there's nothing time-sensitive. The things that were set for June and July have already been complete, so we can celebrate that at our next meeting.
Exactly. Okay, so I'm gonna now move to next item, which is appointments and/or reappointments, and I believe we have several motions that I will entertain, beginning with the Cable TV Advisory Committee.
I'll make a motion to appoint Patricia Burns to the Cable TV Advisory Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
An aye and a nay as well. Moving on to the Cultural Council.
Liz, do you mind kind of taking the lead on these? It's tough for me to go back with my limited, okay, thank you.
Sure. I will make a motion to appoint Patricia Coyle to the Cultural Council for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2027. a three-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
An aye and an aye as well.
I will make a motion to appoint David Bailey to the Development and Industrial Commission for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
An aye and an aye as well.
I will make a motion to appoint Joe Cusker to the Development and Industrial Commission to fill an unexpired term ending June 30th, 2026.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
An aye and an aye as well.
I will make a motion to appoint Emily Wentworth to the Metropolitan Area Planning Council for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
An aye and an aye as well.
I'll make a motion to appoint Paul Wasson to the Memorial Bell Tower Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
An aye and an aye as well.
I will make a motion to reappoint Eileen McCracken to the Contributory Retirement System for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
An aye and an aye as well.
I will make a motion to reappoint Karen Johnson, Joshua Ross, Joe Nevens to the Council on Aging for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
An aye and an aye as well.
I will make a motion to reappoint Eliza Fontaines and Jim Hughes to the Shade Tree Committee for a three-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
An aye and an aye as well. And I believe that concludes our appointments for this evening. Moving on, are there any members of the public who have comments on items not on the agenda for this evening? Seeing none, we move to Town Administrator Select Board Reports. I will start with Art.
Yes, thank you, I have one item for this evening. I'm pleased to report that we have a new sustainability coordinator who will be starting next Monday, the 5th. Her name's Patricia Burke, she comes to the role with tremendous experience in working with the city of Boston, working with several nonprofits, and as a private consultant. We're excited to have her on board, there's a lot of work to be done, and she'll be an important contributor to the team. Thank you.
We welcome her, thank you. Mr. Mayo?
Sure, I just wanted to notify all of you and the public that DPW staff and I will be meeting with volunteers of the swap shop later this week or early next week, depending on their availability, and review some new ideas on how to make that as effective a facility as possible. So that'll be happening in the next few days.
Liz?
I just wanna say welcome to Patricia Burke and thank you to all the volunteers that we appointed tonight. There are still openings, so if people wanna fill out a talent bank application, we would certainly welcome that. And I have nothing else to report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Ramsey?
Yeah, I just wanna report that for those who use our beautiful bathing beach, that there is a new outdoor shower tower down there. It's, it's got, it's got a brick underlay, it's a beautiful new shower that people can use to increase their enjoyment of the beach. And also, the floats arrived this week, and those will be going in soon to also allow people to have more enjoyment in the water. Wanna thank the great work of the trustees to make this happen, and I also wanna really point out the tremendous work of Tom and JR to, you know, move these projects along and get them done while we still have a couple of weeks of summer left. So my thanks to everyone who made it happen, and it's, I know the tower has been a very popular addition to the bathing beach down there, so go down and enjoy it.
Yes, and I have nothing further to report. I will accept the motion to adjourn.
I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call vote, Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
An aye and an aye, we are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.